This conference will now be recorded.
October 4th meeting to order, please. Chaplain, please.
Would you stand as able and join me as we pray our invocation? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the mayor, administrator staff, and Sodalia City Council members meet to discuss and make decisions on those important issues affecting this community and its citizens. We would also ask protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, ambulance, hospital staffs, EMTs, and all those who often risk their lives to serve ours and to save ours in many cases. We understand that there are two new fire officers getting their pinnings tonight. We're so thankful for their service and also for the 25 years' service for some of our city employees who have served this community so faithfully. We would ask your protection for all of our military personnel, our armed services here and throughout the world as they protect this great United States of America against adversaries who would change our freedom and our capitalist way of life. We remember that so many have fought and died to create this land, the greatest experiment in a democratic republic. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. All this pray in the name of your son, our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charlie, roll call, please.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
And Bliss?
Here.
Now, we have a special presentation serving the worst night. Charles Davis. Someone up here. We'll work on that. You're long service. We'll have to talk. Charles has been a picture at the department for 25 years. He does most of the tasks. Anytime he's seen around there, he's always doing something busy. We should treat your service. Thank you very much. Amy? We have two service wards, one from the Department of Police. Do you want a little bird?
Well, I'm looking at...
Before the... So, I go and then you get the... Your husband. Kyle Schmidt, come up.
Officer Kyle Schmidt began his career five years ago in telecommunications with our department during dispatch during September 22nd... Excuse me, 2016. In January of 2018, he joined the ranks as a police officer and we hired him full time. Schmidt is a valued member of our department working the wire rotation on night shift. He specializes in field sobriety testing and DWIs. For the last few years, Kyle has led the department with most DWI tests. He did 81 of them last year. We all know those are lives saved. Schmidt is an actively licensed drone operator and played an integral role in the development and implementation of our drone program this last year. So, on behalf of the city of Sodalia Police Department, congratulations.
Now, man, the several lost rewards. Chief, over.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. What'd you say?
I can't hear you.
Battalion Chief Barry White. Battalion Chief White started his employment with the city way back in 2001. In 2006, he was promoted to driver. And again, in 2010, where he was promoted to captain. And finally, in 2018, to battalion chief, which is the rank that he carries right now. During his career, Chief White has been a member of the hazmat team, fire one and two instructor, junior fire academy instructor, and most recently, he's a current member of our high angle confined space team. He currently holds certifications in rope rescue confined space instructor two and officer two. If you ask anybody at the fire station what Chief White's passions are, everybody will tell you it is training, whether it is sliding down a ladder, head first, doing bailouts, working with his crew. When I wrote this, I was like, training is not only his passion, his family is his passion. Nancy is what? I lost it. His family is his passion, and that passion is also in the fire service family, too. He carries deeply for every member of his department. So, I would like to congratulate Chief White for 20 years of service to the city of Sodalia. Do you want to say, Keith?
Thank you, Keith. Keith, you can welcome to come back. You can come back again. Now, we have a presentation night, pinning?
Yes, so tonight, we're going to pin two of our firefighters. Mr. Michael Doyak, if you would please come up with his wife, Taylor, and his son, Benjamin. Y'all coming up? And firefighter Cody Reynolds with his wife, Molly, she wants to come up. These two firefighters started in early April of this year. They have completed all the requirements to wear the badge of the Sodalia Fire Department. As you can tell from the gallery and back, it's pretty important to firefighters, there's really only two things that they ever want to take with them, that's their badge and their helmet. The requirements of a new firefighter are pretty significant, not only learning where the equipment is located on the truck, how the equipment works. They are also being tested on proficiencies by Captain Shaw on that same equipment, all while learning how to work as an organi... how we work as an organization, and also learning how to live with the members of their shift. This is, of course, while they're working calls and everything. This is a big day for both these firefighters and their careers in the Sodalia Fire Department. I'm proud of both of them, and I am eager to see what the future holds for both of them. Firefighter Doyak, congratulations. And firefighter.
Now, we can see how tough they are when they pin, didn't they?
Chief said he had bandages in his pocket.
Yeah. You might know where we could find an EMT to...
And I believe that's all I've got, sir.
Now, we need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minute.
Sound good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? How about Finance Administration, Steve Bliss?
No report. You're kidding me. Wait a minute, last time I had five, so it's even, it averages out. Yeah, but you want to say a few words, just so I know? It's my dad's birthday. Dad, if he was alive, he'd be 93, I think. Wow. Happy birthday. October 4th. He was a great guy.
You mean Don has no good news for us tonight?
Public Safety. Well, Dad's happy. He's in a great place.
Chief, Peter?
Public Safety has one item tonight. It is the police department obtains permission through search warrants to use global positioning system devices during their various investigations. The GPS devices provide valuable information to detectives showing, for example, where stolen goods or drugs are being transported. Over the last several years, we have partnered with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives Task Force on many of these investigations, and they provided the equipment. However, recent Missouri legislation and developments within the ATF has severely limited our ability to continue this practice. Therefore, staff is requesting a budget amendment to appropriate an additional $3,405 for the purchase of two GPS devices along with related reporting services to facilitate the continued use of this important tool. Funds from the asset forfeiture program will be utilized to cover the added expenditures and resulting in a net zero effect on the reserves.
Any discussion from council?
Just out of curiosity, what happened to end the cooperative relationship between ATF and Sodalia Police Department?
Yeah, there was some Missouri legislation that basically creates a liability for the officers as well as the city if we participate in any gun violations of the Second Amendment. And so, that creates difficulty for us in filing part of working with the ATF because of that is if you turn a case into a gun violation. Say, for example, if we are doing a... looking after a drug dealer or going to arrest a drug dealer, they also happen to have a weapon that could make it problematic for that case. And so, with that legislation, the ATF really has pulled back. And then, also, the ATF, some of the changes in leadership there, they are moving to the Springfield office and doing more out of there and less out of the office that we were housing here. So, those two things kind of together, they pulled back and that equipment is on there.
It's unfortunate.
So, now, we develop a relationship with the Missouri Highway Patrol.
Yes.
To kind of fill that gap.
And we still work with ATF, and it's not as strong of a relationship or as close of a relationship as we used to be.
Gotcha. Okay. Charlie, read the resolution, please.
Resolution number 1939, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sodalia, Missouri, authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year 2021-2022 relating to the purchase of additional GPS devices from seizure funds.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, read the orders, please, Charlie.
Bill number 2021-142, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 regarding the purchase of two additional GPS devices utilizing seizure funds.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 2021-142, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 regarding the purchase of two additional GPS devices utilizing seizure funds.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Tina. Thomas Oldham, Public Works. Thomas done it again.
Just two items tonight. The first one is the annexation of the West 10th Street extension. Now that the required 14 days after the hearing has expired, council can consider an ordinance to approve the annexation, and the staff recommends approval of the annexation of the property.
Any council discussion? Read the orders, please, Charlie.
Bill number 2021-143, an ordinance approving the annexation of the West 10th Street extension into the city of Sodalia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill number 2021-143, an ordinance approving the annexation of the West 10th extension, West 10th Street extension into the city of Sodalia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor?
And this is what I mean. You've done it again. There you go.
Your Honor, underneath this same area, I would like to have the Public Works take a look. There's an exit coming off out of the nursing home area there at 10th and Mitchell, and they have since the very beginning poured their parking lot all the way up to the curb. And coming out of there with the two parking places there, you cannot see this. And if we could get that at least to take... where they could take those two parking places away from there. They are in a right-of-way there. Thank you.
The second item I have tonight is a water system change order. In connection with the water main replacement project, Rodmacher Brothers Excavating reached substantial completion on the portion of the area of Third Street and Engineer Avenue. As is customary in these contracts, estimates are made for the quantities of pipe fittings, et cetera, and then adjusted to actual quantities during the construction. Staff recommends approval of the change order to finalize this contract for a net decrease to the contract of $9,007.7.
Way to go. This is the area that we had Blue Nile, they followed on their contractual agreement, and we had our bonding company took over that responsibility, and our discompany did get an excellent job.
Hope to use them more.
Yeah. Any other comments from council? Read the orders, please, Charlie.
Bill number 2021-144, an ordinance authorizing change order number two for a deduction in costs resulting from construction adjustments made to the 2018 Water System Improvement Contract 4A.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2021-144, an ordinance authorizing change order number two for a deduction in costs resulting from construction adjustments made to the 2018 Water System Improvement Contract 4A.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
And Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor?
The major bill with Ann or Dawson?
I've got one item on the agenda. It's a resolution and ordinance. If you recall, last year, we entered into an agreement to purchase the Christmas lights for downtown at a cost of $21,047. And then, that quote included the storage and rehanging of those lights this year for[1036.51][1036.54]$17,230. So, what this budget amendment or resolution ordinance does is it covers the cost of the rehanging of those lights, and then it expands that program to where it wraps around each block and goes down mid-street. And then, also, on some of the taller buildings, we're going to be doing vertical lights such as McLaughlin's, the Commerce Building, the Lights Building. So, that's what it's all about.
So, we got to further define that today, outlining the edges from the sidewalk up into the roof. No. Is that correct? And then, the wraparound?
Yeah, and we're... we'll get that definition. I would point out that staff has put it together, and we're recommending the budget amendment for the full $28,000, what the number was. However, council could have the option of just doing the $17,000 of rehanging the lights that we did last year and not doing the expansion or doing the total. I would say that in Fund 15, the capital improvement funds, I believe we are going to be under budget in enough projects to more than offset this. So, it's not going to really take out of reserves to be... to do this in total. But I did want to throw that out there for an option for council. If you didn't want to do the expansion, we could take this in two bites, if you will.
Yeah, council discussion. The Third Street parking lot came in at $75,000?
Yeah, we had budgeted... we had budgeted $300,000. I think it came in somewhere around $75,000. Now, we're going to be over in some other places that are going to eat up part of that. But then, we also have... we had budgeted for the 32nd Street and limit lane improvements, which we're not getting much traction with partnering with MoDOT on that. So, it's doubtful that will happen this year or this fiscal year. So, between those two, there's going to be way more than enough to offset this $28,000. And I would point out, too, it is in capital improvement, so this is not something that we could use for something else like wasted or something like that, so.
Any council discussion?
So, the $28,000, how much of that is actually lights and how much of that's actually labor? Do you have any idea?
Oh, no, not really. I think...
We're calling across from here.
Because, see, part of the labor is, I mean, they buy it and... or he buys it. He just buys the wire and the lights themselves, and he wires it. He creates the band and then puts it, hangs them up, creates the hanging mechanism. I think they're... they use magnets, right? Yeah, and then he's... okay. So, I'd say a good portion of it is the labor.
So, you take them down, too.
You've got some... It is costs associated with those manups or the deals that they have to use to get them up. Those aren't cheap.
The deal?
Yeah, whatever they're called.
The hubber board.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
So, I guess at some point in time, I want to know, we own the lights, though. I mean, we've got documentation. That's our property. If things... yeah, four or five years from now, if it goes south, we're going to have a bunch of lights, and we're going to have to get the fire department to hang. I know. Hey, there you go. Right, well, that's what's in the back of my mind, you know?
Yeah, just your confidence.
This is a negative. I think it'd be great.
Just for an example, last year, the purchase of the lights and hanging them was $21,000 and some odd dollars. And then, to rehang them this year, those same lights was $17.
I guess my only point is, at some point in time, we need an inventory of the lights that we own. Other than that, I'm not worried.
So, this individual, this particular veteran, he maintains them, replaces the ball, does all of that?
Yeah, I think it's great, but at some point, I don't want to know.
I'm a store. Okay. Any other questions? Charlie, read the orders, please.
Well, I got a resolution first. Resolution 1940, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sodalia, Missouri, authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year 2021-22 relating to the installation of Christmas lights.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, we can read the orders.
Bill number 2021-145, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 21-22 regarding the installation of Christmas lights.
Second reading.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2021-145, an ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year 21-22 regarding the installation of Christmas lights.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
Now, appointments, please, Charlie.
We have two members of the City Council from Mayor John Cady. It's a new appointment to the Public Library Board, Christopher Paskowicz, 712 West Broadway, ending June 30-24, and be completing Michelle Franklin's term.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Labor licenses, please, Charlie.
Okay, we have new licenses, and therefore, a special event license for the Sodalia Lions Club Pub Crawl, October 16, '21. Jennifer Edwards doing business as End Zone Sports Bar and Grill, 3129 West Broadway. Henry Hatfield doing business as East Street Bar, 1201 East Third. Chancey Sherman doing business as Chances R Sports Bar at 303 South Lamine. Lisa Tatum doing business as the Lantern House, 21746 West Highway 50. And Rebecca LaKempfer doing business as Corner Lounge, 1604 South Ohio. And we also have three renewals this evening. Kathy Getz doing business as Break Time, number 3167 at 101 Rebar Road, packaged liquor and Sunday sales. Jennifer Edwards doing business as End Zone Sports Bar and Grill at 3129 West Broadway for the liquor-by-the-drink and Sunday sales. And Chancey Sherman doing business as Chances R Sports Bar, 303 South Lamine for liquor-by-the-drink and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, council, anybody want to make a comment? City Minister? Vice White, tonight?
I guess I would comment that we last week went to the Missouri Municipal League Conference, and several of us attended and had several ideas or several... it was good to get out again and get to a conference and gather some ideas, and we'll be working to bring some of those ideas back and get them implemented.
I mean, after we had that discussion, I think we had some distinct possibilities that helped us. That was a good conference for us. There's what?
Other than that, I'm also looking forward to the... to the... all the homecoming and all of that later this month.
Are the banners... what are the banners going on?
Banners are here, and they're going up. So, Julie can give an update on that, Julie?
That'd be good. Got you, Julie.
Everybody's but yours came out okay.
My's upside down.
We had 24 personalized banners sold, and they're all in, and they look wonderful. All the regular banners are in. The Street Department had already started putting up the brackets, and so now that the banners are in themselves, they're starting to do both at the same time. So, the concentration is to go down Ohio Avenue and then around the courthouse, and as time permits, doing the other portions of the downtown area. So, I think it's going to look wonderful.
Did you say when we're going to start seeing the banners?
I would say this week. As I look at Brenda and tell her to make sure she tells the Street Department, thank you very much for helping us out on this, that they are on it, so I really appreciate it. It's on the 15th. And so, we are going to hopefully have them. The news release when it went out said that they were out to vote. It's supposed to be up that Monday before, so we're ahead of the game, so can't ask for better than that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, folks. I don't know. She's good salesman. Is anybody out here in the audience like to say a few words tonight, other than Julie? If you can come back?
I've... just as an aside, I've received some complaints about landlords bringing property in and dumping it in the right-of-way in front of tenants' houses. I don't know how widespread that is, but... and I don't know what everybody thinks about the pickup-on-demand service that we got going. Is there something we can do about that?
So, people are... are having people coming in that have property in the county and bringing in... I mean, it seems like, and I actually had talked to Kevin about this a couple weeks ago, but we're seeing an alarming number of those kinds of disposals on the curb side. And is that creating a problem for us? So, I don't know what would happen if we didn't have it. You know, the process, you know, we have... I know we have a place house on Center Avenue. Always a problem. And they, you know, public enforcement isn't aware of it. And the forecall is they want you to put it on the curb. You give notice to whoever that is and Public Works, they have 24 hours to get it picked up.
Actually, they're supposed to contact Public Works to make an appointment, and then they're not... yeah, they're not supposed to put it out prior... more than 24 hours prior to the appointment. Now, another piece of that is that we did, oh, a few years ago, pass an ordinance that anything that is in the right-of-way, Public Works can go ahead and pick it up and build the port, so. And we are building for the pickup-on-demand and the abatements or the anything in the right-of-way, so.
But we have to... it's been increased.
Yeah. Yep. And then, also, we went to the clean sweep where we do the... once a year, we go through and schedule... And then also we went to the, um, uh, the clean sweep where we do the, once a year, we go through and, and schedule that, which, uh, gives the free portion up to two yards, four yards? Yeah, four yards, okay. Um, do you think the pickup on-demand is, I mean, is it the way to go? Cause right now, I don't see how piles of trash sitting all over the city in the right-of-way is a great look for the city of Soudaya. Yeah, if, if we could get compliance with, they make the appointment before they put it up there and then only put it up there twenty-four hours in advance, no more than twenty-four hours in advance of the pickup, that would, uh, help it. One of the things too, and we, we talked about this, and that was part of how we are, when we were setting the fees. Uh, and I don't know how we encourage people or get this word out, but, uh, as we set those fees, we tried to make it where it was more economical for them to request a roll-off container or a, uh, or a two-yard even, um, you know, the containers, which would be a whole lot better. And that a way, they can get their container, they can throw it in the container, it looks better, it's easier for us, it's safer for us and all of that. And, uh, so I, I don't know how we get people encouraged to doing that instead of setting a pile of trash at the curb.
I think most of these instances occurring with, uh, rental properties, uh, of course, it happens, you can see it, that the first of the month is when it's in transition and you see that it's more prevalent. And landlord is getting the property cleaned up and putting it on the curb line with that in regard to giving notice to, to the, uh, street alley or to Public Works.
Yeah, the places that I'm getting complaints on, it's like repeatedly happening. I mean, it's like a, it's a monthly thing.
Yeah, and it's, it goes through the process. So how, how do we cure that? We've had that discussion several times and I, I think you're correct, I mean, we, we can, you know, maybe just.
I, I guess part of that is that we could cite them, I guess, uh, we could look into doing that. I don't know, as, um, uh, you know, violation of the ordinance of putting it out there twen- more than twenty-four hours in advance. And, um, you know, I don't know, that, that may help.
I have a question. Uh, when people take their trash out, their lint drop off, I guess, people in charge estimate how much you owe and deal your right then or what?
At the, at the drop-off sign?
Yeah, yeah, whenever they take an old horse machine or some trash out.
I thought you said lint, so you, you got.
Well, no, the lint drop off, that's what I call it.
Okay.
When they take trash out, they're.
We collect white goods.
Pardon?
We collect white goods appliances, which will include washing dryers, uh, microwave. All of those items are collected and, and just taken to advantage to be recycled.
Yeah, so there's no charge for that.
There's no charge for that.
Now, there is a, if, if county residents want to, outside the city, want to participate, it's sixty-four dollars a year or something like that. Um, and they, they do that with a sticker on their window.
But the other piece, Julie, that we instituted at the same time, uh, charging for putting things in the right-of-way, there are landlords who take faulty items that we put into containers. Uh, if they can't get it picked up on demand, which we have, they'll bring out a pickup load, they just step it off and they just stay there.
Well, there's.
And we still refer that.
Yeah. Which is much more efficient for, uh, if, if we could get them switched over to that. And maybe to get them there, we, maybe we do have to do a few citations, especially for the landlords that do the repeated.
Well, I, I just dealt with it in my ward, it wasn't a landlord, it was, they were rental properties, but they'd been there quite a while. Moved them, but, and they're sneaky, they took a bunch of material, mattresses mainly, and didn't put it in front of their house, they put it in front of the neighbor's house. So now, now I'm aware of this, right?
And they're.
Deal, I talked to Brenda about it, found out that, you know, we can bill them twice a year. But was getting ready to make sure we build the right person, they moved it onto a trailer on the street for a week or two. And then eventually, probably trellered it out into the county and dumped it somewhere, who knows? But, um, didn't have anything to do with, they, they're still there, they weren't being moved out. It was rental property, but it wasn't because of a change, a change in tenant. But, uh, you know, we need to just make sure we've got an explanation on our website, maybe once a year with regard to the pickup. We publish the rules in an ad in the paper, but, uh. Is it good?
Yeah.
I need to make, I should have said, we need to make, I'm sure it's on the website, make sure people can drill down and find it.
Maybe we can sweet-talk Mr. Howell and, uh.
Yeah, I'm trying to get, that's what I'm, I'm going to keep talking, Julie. Yeah?
All right.
That'd be great.
You know, there's the reverse of that also, where you've got landlords that are load up and take it to some other side in the city and also from the county. You, I've seen the county people come in and dump stuff.
Oh, amen.
A lot, and, you know, who do you go after there? The only thing I can recommend is if you don't recognize it, take a picture of them.
So the county residents can come to City Hall and buy per annual permit, which really, it's sixty-five dollars, yeah?
Yeah, I think it's.
I think sixty-four, isn't it?
And you have it on display.
Big historic.
And there's a, there's a yard waste pickup also.
Yeah, that we, and I don't remember the amount for that. Like two dollars a month, I think, what they cost a month at all.
We, we do, it's simply a waste in there, um, so it's, um, a lot of vegetation. Because, but we have plenty out there and you can buy them by, by, right now, um, flash when there's ice storm.
We, we don't, I don't think we have many people that are participating in yard waste program. You are? Tell, tell us about it.
Well, since I'm owning the house that kind of has a little bit of a mini jungle in the backyard, I was really excited about the fact that it's just two dollars an extra a month. And basically you just have to make sure your, your small yard waste is in the biodegradable paper bags, to set them to the curb. And then just make sure that your limbs are cut, they're supposed to be within three feet pieces and just make it nice and neat. Of course, I'm out there with my little measuring stick, making sure that they're just three feet, and they're laughing at me, they said it's fine. But it's wonderful, and it's just, it, uh, on the east side, it's two different Mondays, on the west side, it's two other ones. And they're just like clockwork. So the biggest thing is to make sure that you're stuffed down and then you've got it set out when it's time for it to be picked up, it's great.
So you put it on.
It's very handy. Yeah, you put it on the curb, just make sure you keep it away from your tree lines and that sort of stuff, so they can't, don't have any problems taking it up. It takes them a lot less time to pick that stuff in than, than, uh, ta- tearing it down and putting it in the bags and that kind of stuff. It's an easy watch. Two dollars a month. Yeah. It's, it's a nice little service they provide.
Thank you, Julie.
Oh, Brenda said it runs March to November, so I'm going to make sure I've got my cleanup done before then, so.
Any other comments, anybody else out there?
Hearing none, I move that we go to closed-door session in accordance with the revised statutes in the state of Missouri of six ten oh twenty-one for legal and real estate advice.
Second.
Roll call please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Like God said, God. Do we have a motion?
Motion, Dawson.
Roll call please.
We don't have an attorney here yet.
Hold on just a sec. Okay, roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me, let me put the recorder on here. Okay. Lehman?
I'm here.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross? Foster?
Here.
And Bliss?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
So we, we have the order.
I'm here.
We have two, and since these were put in the packets, we only have to read the title this evening, so that's a good thing.
Any council discussion? You want to read your orders, Arlene?
Okay, bill number 2021 dash 146, an ordinance approving the sale of property located at eight twenty North Monetall by quick claim deed by the city of Soudaya, Missouri to Samuel I Grabett, Jr. and Vicky Grabett.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2021 dash 146, an ordinance approving the sale of property located at eight twenty North Monetall by quick claim deed by the city of Soudaya, Missouri to Samuel I Grabett, Jr. and Vicky Grabett.
Final passage. Second.
Second. Roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Okay, Chris, Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
And Dawson?
Yes.
So that's all, okay. Next one is bill number 2021 dash 147, an ordinance approving the sale of property located at twenty-four oh six West Third Street by special warranty deed by the city of Soudaya, Missouri to Max Kirsch and Valentina Kirsch.
Second reading, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number 2021 dash 147, an ordinance approving the sale of property located at twenty-four oh six West Third Street by special warranty deed by the city of Soudaya, Missouri to Max Kirsch and Valentina Kirsch.
Final passage. Second.
Roll call please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
And Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
So we want to thank Joe Lawler for pointing us out that we can get to this process. It's easier.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
So we, ready to roll?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.